And it looks like everybody who was trying to get on did connect. So I will go ahead and open the Tuesday, February ninth, two thousand and twenty one Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. And we'll start with the roll call. Carla Dischardens here. John Meyer. Sean. Mary Ann, did you want to say something?
No.
Okay. Sean Peterson.
Present.
Lindsey Jocelyn. Roz Chivik. Bill Martell. Jared Fornier.
Here.
Kathy Messtermaker Harris.
Here.
Okay, and then for staff, Ryan Bray.
Here.
Sonya Chapman.
She is here. She's just muted.
Okay, thank you. And Mary Ann Shinati.
Here.
Okay, so I'll appoint alternates. I will appoint Jared for Lindsey and Kathy for Roz. So then we go into our public hearing. Z two thousand and twenty one, one nine six seven of Sanghermano Properties LLC requesting a planned development district site plan review for retail and wholesale business, building materials, storage and sale, manufacturer of construction and building materials from earth, rock or minerals and recycled materials, truck terminal, earth excavation, processing and removal at twelve twenty one and twelve forty one Norwich Road Plainfield, assessors map five, block four, lots forty two and forty two A. Do we have someone to speak for the applicant?
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, floor is yours.
Okay, my name is Damian Sorrentino. I'm a certified planner and soil scientist from Boundaries LLC. In Griswold, you'll see that Jen and Joe Sangherman are also on here. Attending the meeting via Zoom. So we have some housekeeping items to take care of, and you'll excuse me, my camera is on my laptop, which is not part of my monitor. It's kind of off to the side, so you might see me looking back and forth as I look to the screen. We have the, a butter notification for this public hearing was sent out in due time. Due to COVID restrictions, I sent a PDF copy of the notice package along with a scan of the of the certified mail slips to Ryan. Also delivered the hard copy of those certified mail slips to Ryan's office yesterday. The certified mail receipts that came back, we, as of today at noon, we received eight of the thirteen. I did also forward those to Ryan's attention via PDF today, so I hereby attest that the thirteen of Butters who were entitled to notification of this public hearing were in fact notified. And so we are here this evening on behalf of Sanghermano Properties LLC and Joseph T. Sanghermano as an individual for properties at twelve twenty one, twelve forty one Norwich Road, kind of the second part of a planned development district application. This is the process that is prescribed by section eleven of the Plainfield zoning regulations wherein in a commercial district, you can apply for this planned development designation and apply for uses that are typically allowed in industrial districts to be allowed in the commercial district. We attended a public hearing via Zoom on November tenth of two thousand and twenty, which constituted the basic development plan portion of the PDD process as prescribed by section eleven five two of the Plainfield zoning regulations. We now appear here at our second public hearing. It's my understanding that this is typically done kind of as one process, but we decided to split it up to first get a feel for the commission's response to our basic development plan and then come back for the detailed development plan, which we are here for this evening. And that process is prescribed by eleven point seven of the Plainfield zoning regulations. If the commission approves this detailed development plan that we're presenting this evening, the planned development district is considered established and the zoning map revised. And that is prescribed in section eleven point eleven of the Plainfield zoning regulations. So I don't know if it's possible for me to get control of the screen so I can put.
It is. I will make you host.
Thank you.
Sure, you give it back to me at the end.
Here's where you're going to see me looking a bit off center as I, as I refer to the plan. I am the host now. How do I share my screen?
Down at the bottom, it'll say share a screen.
So you can all see my screen. You're seeing the plan?
Yep.
Okay. So this is what constitutes our detailed development plan for this project. First and foremost, want to look to the lower left side of the plan so that everybody's clear. So, so that everybody is clear, both the, the commission and any of Butters who are interested parties. The existing land uses that we have on this property are the offices for K and H Construction LLC. We have a retail power equipment, sales and service business, which is previously permitted. Retail landscape supply, which was previously permitted. Accessory apartment in the commercial district. There's an apartment upstairs of the, of the main building. And then earth excavations. We've received permits first under Seer Construction, which was transferred to Sanghermano, and then another Sanghermano application for twelve forty one Norwich Road, which was previously permitted. I'll get into the references for those, for those permits in a moment. So the proposed land uses that were shown on our basic development plan, you remember we had, back in November, we had a a color schematic of this property showing areas within which we were going to propose the different uses. So the proposed land uses that, that we have here that are allowed in the industrial district that we're proposing for the planned development district are the wholesale business and business of, and building material storage in sale excluding coal or coke per section nine thirty four I. That is the production of aggregate and storage of these different, the stockpiling and storage and onsite sale of those different aggregate products that Mr. Sanghermano is proposing to do here as part of this planned development district. The manufacturing of construction and building material, building products from earth, rock or minerals. Again, he's currently permitted for excavation and does some, some sifting of the material. He is proposing to bring in a crusher for this operation and crush down rock into usable aggregate to mix. And also, when we get to the next use, which is the manufacturing of products from recycled materials, manufacturing shall be the primary operation. Retrieval, separating and transporting shall be secondary operation to the manufacturing process. Mr. Sanghermano has recently started K and H Dumpster Division. Within those dumpsters, he occasionally gets reusable building materials, unpainted block, unpainted brick. We have asphalt paving fragments, concrete, things of that nature that is, that meets the definition of clean fill per the Connecticut general statutes and that he would like to bring to the site when collected from his dumpster division, bring it to the site, crush that material and reuse it in the aggregate that he stockpiles and offers for sale at both wholesale and retail. The bus, truck and/or freight terminals per section nine forty one E, that's with a little asterix there. This is not for that, that asterix says that the truck terminal i- is the use category proposed for the K and H Dumpster Division. The applicant's intent is not for establishment of a transportation depot, truck stop, shipping terminal, distribution hub or other similar uses. So this is specifically for the, should I be admitting people as I'm, as they're popping up here since I'm controlling, I suppose, I suppose I should be admitting people to the meeting? So I am doing that. The earth excavation, processing and removal. The, 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 the processing is the real portion of that. We already have excavation permits, so this would be a processing and removal addition to that where materials originating from offsite, both natural soil and rock, and also those other materials that could be recycled would be then processed and returned to useful life as, as processed aggregate. So a few different locations on this plan, you'll see in this box right here, among others, says that the receiving onsite sorting, stockpiling and/or processing of any materials other than asphalt pavement fragments, concrete, unpainted brick, unpainted masonry block, natural soil and rock, all of which meet the definition of clean fill per section twenty two eight, two oh nine dash one of the regulations of Connecticut state agencies is expressly prohibited. We've tried to make it clear in several locations on this plan that that is our intent. The processing of materials for recycling will be limited to those materials listed that constitute and meet the definition of clean fill per the general statutes. There are two separate callouts in the main body, the main area of the processing area. This dark dashed line is what we've established as the location for the, the sorting of asphalt pavement fragments, concrete, unpainted brick, unpainted masonry block, natural soil for direct reuse. We're proposing a bank run gravel surface in that area. And here we have a call out, the area for processing of excavated imported earth products and to manufacturing of aggregate products using recycled materials. Also bank run gravel with stone surface on the ground to prevent dust. The, the area with the crosshatch in here is the area within which the processing equipment is limited to be located and operated. We have a call out here. The minimum of one hundred feet of horizontal distance must be maintained between processing machinery, equipment and, and the property boundary line. That would be the shared boundary line with Walmsley to the south. And a call out within that that crosshatched area that reads the location and operation of processing machinery and equipment, portable screener or portable crusher shall be limited to the area with the gray crosshatch. So you'll see its interior to the property. It's behind these stockpiles. It's behind this, this cold storage building that was approved several months ago and pretty well hidden. We, we have that shared property boundary. That shared property boundary with Walmsley is a RA sixty district. So we had initially proposed just, you know, removing this portion of the stockpile and maintaining the existing vegetation line. Ryan had asked for a stockade, some, some sort of a buffer along that property line to adequately protect the Walmsley residents from our activity. We proposed four hundred linear feet of a six foot high wood stockade fence. There's a stockade fence along the other side, along Quinley and along twelve fifteen Norwich Road. We're proposing four hundred linear feet of that six foot stockade fence there. Located fifteen feet off of the property line. Thought being that within the fifteen feet between the property line and that six foot stockade fence, that the natural vegetation would be maintained where it currently exists and or allowed to just, you know, grow unchecked to fill in the vegetative buffer behind that fence in order to protect the Walmsley residents. Now, the Walmsley residence is way up by Norwich Road. It's actually only about fifty feet off of the edge of pavement on Norwich Road. So our proposed fence goes four hundred feet back, which encompasses most of what, what appears from the aerial photograph to be the Walmsley's backyard. It's pretty substantial in size. So we are proposing that buffer there. We're maintaining the existing buffers on the other side. We have designated locations for stockpiles, the area for stockpiling of bulk processed and manufactured materials and aggregate. Number and dimensions of the pile may vary, but we do call out a thirty foot maximum height to those wholesale piles of, of aggregate and, and building material there. We show the footprint of four, which is a reasonable footprint for a thirty foot height in that location. So general notes on this plan that we have, zoom in on these. The subject property is located in the C one district. Plainfield Planning and Zoning Commission conditionally approved the PDD basic development plan on November the tenth of two thousand and twenty in a reference to that application number. But we are not proposing additional buildings, no additional onsite excavation beyond what has been previously permitted is proposed by this plan. We reference three different PMZ Planning and Zoning Commission permits for excavation. We have the proposed truck routes listed in three, which are consistent with the truck routes for the existing excavation permits. Estimated number of vehicle trips per day is not to exceed fifty, twenty five arrivals and twenty five departures. Proposed hours of operation, which are generally consistent with the, the prior excavation permits, Monday through Friday, seven AM to seven PM. We note a different time for the crusher, starting a little later and ending a little bit earlier, being eight o'clock AM to five thirty PM, Monday through Friday, Saturday, seven AM to five PM on the regular operation, no crusher operation outside the window of nine AM to five thirty on Saturday. Sunday, regular operations are nine AM to three PM, and we propose no crusher operation on Sundays and no operations on legal holidays for the excavation portion and, and processing. The list of excavation equipment, trucks and processing machinery to be used includes a portable screener, portable crusher, two front end loader, loaders, one bulldozer, one excavator, up to six triaxle dump trucks and two hook trucks for the roll off dumpsters. Number seven again gets back to the, the limitation that we're kind of self imposing as far as clean fill, the processing of the clean fill, the stockpiling and processing of earth materials constituting natural soil and rock originating from the subject property, two earth materials, natural soil and rock originating from offsite sources. And three recycled materials meeting the statutory definition of clean fill, asphalt paving fragments, concrete, unpainted brick, unpainted masonry block, natural soil and rock is intended to occur within the areas specified on this plan. And again, a reiteration of that call out for the one hundred feet for the separating distance in accordance with section twelve thirty two seven A. The Plainfield zoning regulations, the portable screener and portable crusher shall not be operated within one hundred feet of any adjoining property line or street. Again, it is our intention that the operate, that the crushing and screening operation occur only within the area designated by that crosshatch. So that is the plan that was submitted. It's my understanding that the town planner and CEO referred that to CHA Consulting Engineers. I, I submitted the the, the plan and all of the supporting documentation that went along with the application to them. We did receive a letter in return from them, dated January twenty ninth. States as stated in January two thousand and twenty one letter from Boundaries LLC, the earthwork has already been permitted by Plainfield PCC. No additional improvements to the property are proposed. The location of excavation, processing earth products and storing earth products is graded such that all stormwater runoff will be retained on site. Runoff from this location will not leave the site or drain to the existing stormwater management system at the front of the site. CHA has no comments regarding this site plan. So we also had correspondence. I did reach out to Connecticut Department of Environmental, Energy and Environmental Protection. I bet this is a mouthful. Solid waste permitting, waste engineering and enforcement division under the Bureau of Materials Management and Compliance Assurance to make sure that what we were proposing here did not require a solid waste permit issued by that department. And I did speak with, I spoke via email with Mark Jepson, who was an environmental analyst, and also Frank Gagliardo, who's a supervising environmental analyst, forwarded them the site plan that you're reviewing this evening and had a, an email exchange with them. And they, their response was they have not issued solid waste permits for receipt and processing of clean fill materials. So they seem to be satisfied with the stipulations that we were placing on the plan, the multiple locations that it was called out, that the materials that we were proposing to receive process and reintroduce into the processed aggregate material was clean fill and that it did not require a solid waste permit for those activities. So suppose that's, that's about all for my, for my presentation. If there are any specific questions related to the plan or any of the other materials submitted, I'd be happy to answer them. And applicant is also on the line. If he can he can get through via voice, he may be able to to add to that conversation. So I think I'm going to stop the share here.
So this is a public hearing. So if there's anyone on the call who has a comment or question regarding this application, and before I take that, I want to note that Lindsey Jocelyn is on the call. So Lindsey resumes her member seat and Jared will be seated for John Meyer. So the seated alternates remain Jared Fornier and Kathy Messtermaker Harris, but Lindsey Jocelyn has joined the call. So the floor is open. Anyone with a comment or question on this application?
Damian, can I just get the host back, please?
Nope, I thought I stood to stop share.
Just click on my tile and go to the three dots and you can give me the host back in there.
So anyone on the call, public hearing, public comment, just state your name.
Ms. Art Gagni. As you know, I've been going through the ordinances. We're trying to review them. And I came up with ordinance number ninety three. I don't, I don't know if you're familiar. It's an ordinance concerning solid waste. And I don't know if you want to look at that first. It shows everything. Go into the Board of Selectmen startup, solid waste facilities. I don't know if there's anything in zoning regulations that would, you know, make that void, but.
Damian, from the information you presented, they were indicating that the clean fill does not qualify as solid waste. Is that correct?
That's correct. Connecticut DEEP Environmental Analyst told us that we do not need a solid waste permit for what we are proposing by this plan.
You need a permit, but they didn't say it's not a solid waste facility.
If it were a solid waste facility, it would require a permit.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Okay. Just checking. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else on the call with a comment or a question?
Evan Cunningham, just one question. There is also a letter that was attached from January twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty one from Tom and Darling Buffington. Have, we've been discussing how to address the watering of their dust issues.
Do you have a dust control plan, Damian?
Not specific to this operation. The, we, we did receive a copy of that letter from the planning department and I discussed that with the applicant. We all know that this past summer was, was, you know, drastically dry and drought conditions probably made it conducive for, for, for ambient dust to travel across that property line. There, the property owner does own a, what he calls a water buffalo. He does have the ability to provide water. There is a a, a well that they use that's separate from their drinking water well to, to draw water from the ground to use for watering. I'm not certain when when Mr. Buffington experienced the worst of that dust issue, but my client would be committed to, you know, circling back and, and really focusing on the problem areas when it comes to watering. The Planning and Zoning Commission recently approved the cold storage building, which is on, all along that property line. Mr. Buffington said that, that the six foot stockade fence that was put there, you know, there used to be a hill between those two properties and they removed that. And instead, in place of that hill, put up a stockade fence. There used to be, in the area of that cold storage building, there used to be material stockpiles there. So, you know, front end loaders were going into those piles. They were, they were excavating, they were loading trucks. Trucks were pulling in and out of there. The location of that cold storage building is now in close proximity to the building where Mr. Buffington's business is. That, that new building would serve to block a portion of that of that wind from going over there. Also around that building, as we identify on this plan, the asphalt millings have been placed, which is essentially a dust free surface, whereas those triaxle trucks would have been driving over, you know, raw sand and gravel material. And now they're driving over asphalt millings, which presumably produces a significant amount less dust than that. But I did, I did discuss that with, with my client and he is, he does have the equipment on site to do that and is committed to really keep an eye on that, keep an eye on that dust condition there. We do think that the improvements, the recent improvements to the property will, will, will make a big difference in reducing the dust, but he is committed to really focusing on that come, come springtime.
Okay, I do appreciate that because I believe in the first phase of this project, the same issue was brought up. So if there can be some sort of way to continue the monitoring of that, that would be fantastic. So I would, I definitely would be in favor of it if there was something that shows that there is some action going towards watering.
Yeah, we'd be happy to, I mean, we, we can submit to the commission through staff, a, you know, a, a list of best management practices. I can, I can work that up with the, with the applicant and we can submit that to the commission.
Thank you. Anyone else for the public hearing? Any comments or questions from board members or staff?
I got one for you, Carla. The, the dumpster division, does that, those are empty, empty containers stored on that site? There are no containers full of debris?
Again, the, so the location, the location that we're showing on our plan, the feasible location for the storage of empty thirteen, fifteen, eighteen and twenty two foot roll off dumpsters is, is a storage location for them when they are not on client use, when they're not out for, for, for filling by client. The ones that are proposed to be brought back to this site with material in them are only those that have those, those clean fill materials in them that will be reused. It is not the applicant's intent to bring these, to bring any refuse back to this site other than the material that's going to be reintroduced into the aggregate.
Okay. Um, I assume the, the roadway, we're not proposing a new entrance. We're going to enter through by his existing driveway by the building.
Correct.
And then hours of operation for the crushing. On a recent application, we, we had marked out Sally crushing operations for noise for neighbors. Is, is Sally crushing something he is strongly for or would he be willing to give that up?
I have not discussed that. I, I did discuss the proposed hours with my client as far as what he would like to do. You know, where he has an interest in, in, in attempting to permit what, what works best for him and, and and gives him the most flexibility. It's really a demand issue. If he has material there to crush, he's going to want to crush it if he wants it offsite. He wants to get it into aggregate and offsite. I don't know if he's, if he's able to answer that, if he's online, if he would be willing to give up Saturday.
I'd rather not.
Would you be willing to cut the hours back to like noon?
Wait, what? What time do we, what is it? Nine?
It, it's nine to five thirty currently, Joe.
Which is a half hour after.
So we do nine to like two? Three hours is just by the time you get everything going on, it doesn't leave a lot of time. If you could do till two, I would be willing to do that, yes.
And one other question I have, the portable crusher, is that using water also to control the dust?
At this time, no. I don't have it, the machine yet. So I can't tell you it does or doesn't.
Would you be willing to do one with water on it to try to control the dust? Because again, with that other property, we experienced a very large dust cloud from that.
Um, if, as long as it doesn't make me have to get a slurry permit or a sledge pond permit or something like that.
You mean something with just a mister or something like that?
Yeah, just to help control the dust a little, keep it out of the air. I'm not, I'm not talking about washing the material. I'm talking, just missed it, control dust. If that's possible.
Yep.
And we are, based on the equipment that, that Joe chooses as far as the crusher, we're going to have to revisit air quality permits. If it's of a certain size or model that's going to trigger permits from Connecticut DEEP for air quality, we're going to have to revisit the, the material, the equipment, excuse me, the, the model and make of that equipment with Connecticut DEEP Environmental Analysts, but.
I, I don't plan on putting a big crusher there.
Okay, so we're going to aim for something with, with an integrated misting for dust control and also one that is small enough that maybe doesn't trigger the requirement for, for air quality permits from DEEP. Sounds like.
Yeah, it definitely will be a portable. Yeah, it definitely will be a portable-sized crusher.
Okay. And you said, and I, did I hear nine to two on Saturday was a kind of a?
Yeah.
Fun? Thing? Does the commission find that acceptable?
I think we'll probably deliberate on that after the close of the public hearing.
Okay. Well, that, I, I guess the applicant has revised his proposal to, to be nine, nine AM to two PM on Saturdays for the crushing.
Any other questions? This is still a public hearing.
I do have a question.
Yep.
Uh, Mary Ann Chinati Town Planner. Um, crushers can be very noisy and I, I know that uh, the applicant has specified crusher hours. But screeners can also be quite noisy, sometimes more so than crushers. Um, would the applicant be willing to limit screener hours to the same as the crusher hours? There is uh, a large subdivision to the south of that property. And as I said, screeners can oftentimes be even louder than a crusher.
I would agree with you on that. Um, other than my, my screener is not a shaker deck screener. My screener is a tromble screener, so it just spins, it doesn't shake. So my screener is actually very quiet. Your, your statement about them being the same noise is, is absolutely, absolutely true. But the type of screener I have is not a shaker deck where the material drops on a deck and then that deck shakes back and forth. My, my screener rotates. So it's, it's not, it's not that loud at all. If that makes any.
Joe, what are your current hours of operation for your screener on the gravel excavation?
Uh, I think right now they're the Mondays through Fridays hours and then the, the actual hours that were open and on Saturday, nothing on Sunday. Um, I don't think I ever went for anything screening on Sunday. I'm not, I'm not exactly sure. So I really just honestly answered that.
I can look it up on the plan. If you give me a minute, I can pull up the plan.
And we don't, we try not to run, we do, on the weekends, we definitely, we're not right out there at seven o'clock in the morning. And, and we try not to run too late at night. I mean, sometimes during, um, even not during the week, but sometimes at the beginning in the springtime, you know, we're, we're right against it. We got X amount of hours of light. And uh, you know, we're, we're, we're using every moment of it that we can.
And just for clarity, screening is already being done on the property. Is that right?
Correct.
And Ryan, have there been any complaints about screening noise for the current activity?
There have not. And uh, just for clarity, um, the screening is permitted as part of the earth excavation that's been permitted.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions from staff, board members, or the public?
I have no further comments. Um, when we get to deliberation, I do have a few suggested uh, conditions of approval.
Okay. All right, hearing no other comments, I'll entertain a motion on the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Sean and a second by Lindsay. All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Public hearing is closed. Moving on to our regular meeting, so I'll call the regular, thank you, calling the regular meeting to order. Um, I don't believe we had any additions or corrections to the agenda.
We do actually. Um, so we have one addition. That would be B under new business. Z two thousand twenty-one nineteen eighty-four of Northeast Real Estate LLC requesting a text amendment for the industrial one, industrial two zoning districts to allow for a contractor's business to be allowed as a matter of right.
Okay, so we have one item of new business, uh, Z two thousand twenty-one nineteen eighty-four to be entered as item B. Do I have a motion to add that item?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. I have a motion by Sean and a second by Kathy. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, added under new business, item B. Citizens' participation. This is opportunity for the public to address the commission on an item that is not a public hearing that's already closed. Is there any public comment? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Moving on to the unfinished old business. Item A, Z two thousand twenty-one nine zero four, continuation of Exeter Group requesting site plan review for proposed two hundred two thousand forty-four square foot warehouse with six hundred sixty-four parking spaces, access drives, parking lot, utility connections, stormwater management systems, site lighting, and landscaping on property located at one thirty-seven Lathrop Road, Plainfield map eighteen, block thirteen, lots eleven and twelve, industrial one zoning district. Do we have someone to speak for the applicant?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'll, I'll get us started. Uh, my name is Tom Cody. I'm a lawyer at the firm of Robinson and Cole. Our office is at two eighty Trumbull Street in Hartford. And I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Exeter Property Group. We have several members of our professional team, um, also with us this evening. I'd like to just introduce them as well. Um, from amazon.com, Jessica Schumer. Jessica's an economic development manager with Amazon and also Michael Kelleher, who is a senior program manager. Andrew Graybar is here. He's a senior project manager with Exeter. And then from BL Companies, we have two professional engineers, Matt Robillard and Michael Dion. So the property uh, that is involved in this application is the sixty-one acre property known as the former Greyhound Racetrack Facility. It's located in the industrial one zone. And this is a site plan application for a warehouse and distribution facility to be operated by amazon.com as a so-called last mile distribution facility. We did apply uh, for an inland wetlands permit. And back in November, uh, the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Commission approved an inland wetlands uh, permit for this project. So this evening, we'll have three uh, members of our team present to you. Um, first, Jessica Schumer with Amazon is going to explain how this facility will operate. Next, Matt Robillard uh, will walk you through the site plan and all of the civil engineering details. And then finally, Michael Dion uh, will present to you the traffic study that was prepared for the project. So with that, um, I will turn the floor over to Jessica to take you through site operations.
Um, if Matt, you could get sharing screen access so we can put up the site plan, that'd be really helpful.
Yes, uh, if you can make that for me, uh, Ryan, that'd be great.
Yep, give me one second.
No problem. Okay, let's share the screen here.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt. Um, good evening, everyone. Uh, like um, Tom said, my name is Jessica Schumer. I am a economic development manager with Amazon, um, covering um, the northeast, so northern Jersey, New York, Connecticut, um, and Massachusetts. Um, the project we're here to talk about this evening is what we call um, a last mile delivery net, um, project. It's a bit of a misnomer. It's not an actual mile, um, but it is the last stop that a package takes before it goes to our customers' doors. Um, I don't know how many of you are Amazon customers, but what I'll briefly do is, or try to be brief, um, walk you through kind of how this site operates, sort of a day in the life of this facility. These facilities are twenty-four-seven. Um, the operation I will describe is what, what, what is experienced ten months of the year, uh, or ten and a half months of the year, obviously during our peak holiday period when demand is at the highest. Um, things are a little different, but in general, this is what we would expect at this site. So I don't know how many of you are Amazon customers, but right now, when you go on your phone or your computer and you order something um, that's small enough to basically, you know, fit in the size of an airport, um, you know, tray from back when we all used to fly. Um, you, you, the package gets to you one of, one of three ways, um, through the postal service, um, UPS, or increasingly our own last mile delivery network. And that's what this site is. This site is designed to get the packages through our fulfillment network um, to your door. And so how it operates is mostly in the overnight hours, the product arrives in the form of eighteen-wheelers. Um, at a site of this size, we would expect around thirty eighteen-wheelers um, to deliver product with most of them arriving in the overnight hours. Um, they, uh, also in the overnight hours, most of our, although not all of our associates arrive. So the eighteen-wheelers will unload the product in those red areas. Sorry, I should have described these colors. And our associates who are coming on site will park their personal vehicles in this yellow area. Now, most associates do arrive overnight and we do tend to employ mostly full-time um, Amazon workers at this site, obviously supplemented by some temporary and part-time as demand shifts throughout the season. Um, and so those full-time workers all make, these Amazon employees, they all make at least fifteen dollars an hour. And we have to, you know, nationwide, that's our base, fifteen dollars an hour. It's a standard we applied across the country. It's what we have to say across, you know, nationwide. However, in the northeast, that rate does tend to be a little bit higher, and that's before benefits. Our full-time employees also receive full benefits, the same benefits that our corporate employees like myself receive, starting on day one. This includes medical, dental, um, vision, 401K, um, life insurance, and a very generous um, paid leave policy, including up to four months off for new mothers, um, which is not often uh, something most jobs will offer. Um, so they arrive and they get the packages ready to go out. Um, they sort them into baker's racks full of hockey bats. Then in the morning, starting between nine and nine-thirty, the first group of our delivery service partner drivers arrive. These are third-party um, logistics companies, often launched by small businesses or entrepreneurs who get training through Amazon to run these logistics networks. They employ these drivers. At this site, we would anticipate somewhere between three hundred to four hundred full-time driver roles. Um, and through our contracts, we also mandate that these all pay at least fifteen dollars an hour. So like I said, they arrive on site, they, they leave their personal vehicles in this bluish-gray area up top. And this bluish-gray area and the other blue area are all filled in with these, with the Amazon Sprinter vans. I don't know if you've seen them. Um, though, except for the empty space for the first group's personal vehicles. They'll get in and they'll drive in this, these green um, loading areas. And at this site, we anticipate um, each, each wave of vans is about a hundred and sixty, so a hundred and sixty drivers arrive on site. They get into their vehicle, they get in, they drive up their personal vehicles, get into the vans, load the packages, and then they depart as soon as they're loaded. And that starts around ten AM. So the first wave is leaving after the morning rush hour. And we at Amazon realized um, that customers are willing to receive packages up to nine PM at night. And what that allows us to do is shift our whole operation cycle so that we're not sending out vans in the middle of the morning rush hour and having them return in the middle of the PM rush hour. Um, it's not good for our van drivers, it's not good for our communities, and it's not good for our customers. So these vans depart and they're, they, they leave, they don't return until the end of their ten-hour shift, and they'll deliver packages within a forty-five-minute um, drive time of the site. While these vans are loading, the next group of, of van drivers are arriving on site, pulling their personal vehicles into the space vacated by the vans that have been loaded and left, getting into new vans, loading up and departing. And the cycle repeats until all the vans are out delivering packages. During our non-peak hours, we anticipate about three hundred and fifty vans from this site um, per day. Then the site goes quiet for a little while, um, until the late afternoon. And like I said, of the eighteen-wheelers, most are arriving overnight, but we do get a few during the day. And uh, when those come, they're unloaded by a skeleton shift of associates and then delivered by our flex driver program. These are people who use their personal vehicles in the same way you would use your car for Uber or Lyft, but instead of delivering um, people, you're delivering packages. So they'll come in the late afternoon, get their packages, leave, and they won't return unless they have an undeliberate package. Then, starting around seven PM, the first wave of van drivers returns with an empty van. They go through a safety check, pull the van into an empty space, get in their personal vehicle and leave. And the cycle repeats until the parking lot is feathered over again from personal vehicles to vans. And that's basically a day in the life of, of one of these sites. And I'm sorry, I know I have been talking for quite some time, so with that, I will pause um, and turn it over to Matt. Tom, you want us to do questions at the end, right?
Yes, if, Madam Chair, if, if you would agree, we can do the entire presentation and, and handle questions at the end.
That's fine.
Yep.
Thank you. Matt, you're on mute.
Thank you. Sorry about that. All right, so as I said, I, my name is Matt Robillard. I'm with BL Companies. I'm a professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. Um, and I'm going to walk you through uh, this site, site design that we completed. And so obviously, we were talking about this site here. It's on one thirty-seven Lathrop Road. Um, historically, I just want to take a step back and, and look at this property uh, back in two thousand and six, our area, area shown here. Um, you know, this was the previous dog track and it has since been overrun with vegetation. It's obviously in dire need of repair. So overall, as discussed, um, Jessica wanted the detail on, on the logistics of the property. And so, as you know, we have continued our, our original application and modified it um, to show a phased approach to this project. So as you can see, there's two parcels that we've identified that will be used as part of this overall development. So there's, what we're identifying in the uh, that peach color, A two, and then there's the light green A five parcel. Um, we don't anticipate uh, closing on the A five parcel um, until somewhat a little bit later down the line. And so we, as a, as an approach here, we are proposing a phased approach to build out with these, both of these parcels. I must state right off the bat, both, you know, the original phase, phase one on parcel A two, which has the entire building, and the only thing that's excluded is this additional parking lot, um, which you can see my mouse, that's, and that's excluded from a phase one. So phase one meets all the, the parking requirements for the town, all of the zoning requirements. There's no variances or waivers needed. It is standalone, stands alone as a development. And operationally, the end user, Amazon here, requires additional parking, which we would like to utilize parcel A five for. So, and that is kind of the breakdown as to our phased approach. So phase one includes constructing the two hundred two thousand forty-four square foot delivery station, as well as the parking. Uh, and entrances associated for the trucks. And as, as Jessica mentioned, the associate parking spaces here and van parking spaces in the rear of the property. There are existing detention basins on site. There's two on, as part of phase one. Uh, there's this detention basin here, uh, behind the big Y, and then this other detention basin two, which is uh, the, you know, in the rear of this property. Uh, through our wetlands approval, uh, we were, we've come to terms to bring these basins up to current standards. Um, so they're going to be uh, cleaned out, returned to their original condition, and improved upon. Based, that's part of our, our wetlands approval. So both of these basins will be uh, brought to current standards to the best of the ability as, and returned to the original condition of the site approval, uh, previous, uh, previously approved. Uh, phase two includes adding an access road uh, off of, an access drive, I should say, off of the truck entrance to where the additional van parking spaces can be added. Um, as a total parking spaces for this project, that phase one has six hundred and sixty-four spaces total proposed, and phase two has three hundred and ninety-one additional van spaces. Uh, both far exceed um, the requirement for the entire site of three hundred and thirty-seven based on the, the town requirement. Again, I'm going to reiterate, both, phase one stands alone to meet all town requirements. Uh, from a drainage standpoint, phase one handles, phase one and phase two operate individually. So um, overall drainage plan is for phase, so for phase one, we are collecting drainage, we're using deep sump catch basins, we're using underground uh, retention, and then discharging into the existing detention basin, as well as the uh, to the rear of the site, and also the existing detention basin uh, behind the big Y. Peak, uh, peak flows are, are all matched, pre- and post-matched. There's no additional flow to these sites, but we're meeting all the Connecticut Thormar guidelines, Thormar design guidelines for that, uh, for this development. Again, phase one, this is the detention basin behind the big Y. As you can see, we're using hydrodynamic separators. Um, we're using deep sump catch basins and um, a scour hole which will act as a forbey, all of which was pre-approved, which was approved through the wetlands process. So uh, the wet, these are, you know, the wetlands committee had a, a lot of insight up to uh, how we should repair these, and we went forth and designed them in, in their. And we went forth and designed them in their approval, to get their approval. I'm going to shift over to the PDF to show you. Phase two. I apologize for that. So phase two drainage also uses an underground infiltration system. But only handles the runoff from the new parking lot. So we are not, you don't need phase two in order to build phase one. There's no untreated water. There's no any issues with things that are not treated properly during construction, during, after construction. It's a very large PDF, I apologize. All right. Well, we'll move on to, if we can get double back, if anyone has any questions on that. Moving back onto the site lighting, the proposed poles have a overall height of twenty feet. We meet the requirements for no light spillage off the property. Looking at truck turning movements, as we stated earlier, we were, our overall goal is, you know, this is the truck entrance here on further down Lathrop Road. This is the associate entrance and this is where the vans will be leaving out of. So obviously, this site allows for the proper turning movements for the proper vehicles. Now, if I could get this to load. I apologize here. It looks like my PowerPoint is giving me a little bit of, little trouble. So I will talk about, I'm hopeful that this will load. I will talk about utilities on the site. We do have a water main and hydrants proposed on the on the property. There's an existing sewer main that has a, is an existing easement through underneath the building currently, which we're proposing to be relocated. I am, I would love to show you that. And there's existing gas lines, but.
Matt, while we're waiting for that to load, have you heard anything back from DOT regarding the traffic study?
That's a great segue. If Mike wants to talk about traffic study a little bit, we can double back. I apologize here. I'm hopeful this would load up, but I'm gonna send the screen sharing to Mike and then he can talk about traffic.
Thank you, Matt. For the record, Mike Dion with BL Companies. I'm a professional engineer and a professional traffic operations engineer. I also lead the traffic group at BL. And we did do a traffic study for this project. As long as you can see my screen. Just a little recap, what Matt and Jessica had already gone through. The site is at one thirty-seven Lathrop Road. It was to Greyhound Track, which has an existing Office of State Traffic Administration certificate. So we will be updating that through this process. And it has got the two hundred and two thousand square foot package delivery station. What we did for the traffic study is, you know, we started off with a data collection effort, which we did. Traffic counts at six intersections. We did AM, seven to nine, midday, eleven to one, and PM, four to six PM. And these were collected in August of two thousand and twenty. We did realize that it is the pandemic, so traffic counts are not quite where they're supposed to be. So what we did is we went to Connecticut DOT Policy, the Planning and Policy Unit. And they have automatic traffic recorder counts on all the off-ramps in the area from the highway. So they've got, they take those counts every three years. So they reviewed our data and we adjusted them up by about twenty percent to make up the difference in traffic. We also performed a field inventory where we went out and took photographs of all the intersections. We wanted to verify the roadway geometry and lane arrangements that are out there for the signal plans we got from the state. And as I mentioned, we have the historical twenty-four-hour traffic count data. So what we did with all that data is we took the counts and we projected them out to what we call our horizon year, which is the year we want to be operational, which is just next year. So we had a growth factor of, I think it was point eight percent from the DOT that we grew the traffic. We also talked to OSTA and there are no other planned developments that were identified in the area. So we didn't add any other traffic to the background. And we came and we also then take the generated trips from Amazon, which, no, they have gone through. And as Jessica said, they have planned out their deliveries to avoid the AM and PM rush hour. So it doesn't impact the commuting public as much as something like a regular warehouse may. And what those numbers are is that, you know, in the AM peak hour, they're expecting no van deliveries out, no associate drivers coming in and out. But we do expect that there could be up to four tractor trailer trips coming in and out of the site. And we also anticipate in the midday, those DSP delivery service partner vans all leaving the site. So we've got in the peak hour of that, one hundred and forty-eight vans leaving. And in the PM peak hour, we have the flex drivers coming and going. And we've got about a hundred and thirty-six trips coming in and out of the site. So what we do with all that information is we take it and we run it in a program called Synchro, which is a traffic signal timing and analysis software. And what it does is it calculates the delay for every intersection and it assigns a letter grade to it. Just like you're in school, A through F with A being super great and F being failing. Typically, the department transportation here in Connecticut allows D or better is acceptable. So what we found out is when we looked at the intersections, in the AM condition, what you see here is the concentric circle. The inner circle is the build condition after we're up and operational. And the outer circle is how it is operating next year and without our site. So you can see, obviously, in the AM condition, there's no change out there because there's very little traffic generated by our site in AM. In the PM, in the midday condition, you've actually got a location, which is very surprising. And you'll, you'll see that it, you've got one that goes from a B to a C, which is still acceptable. And we also have the Pratt Road intersection, which goes from a C to a D, which is still acceptable in the DOT's eyes. And it really is not a big delay. And when we look at the report, there's no additional queue length there. So it's just an operational issue. We also have the PM condition where actually, something to note is that we have the IC ninety-five on ramps here, which actually improves in the build condition. And that happens because the way the detection is set up out there for the traffic signals, when we add some extra traffic to the through movement, the detector adds time to that through movement. So it actually improved the traffic signal a little bit, which is an unusual instance. But and I also will say that when I say it improves, it really, it's imperceptible because it goes from basically a ten-point-one second delay to a ten-second delay. So it's, nobody will ever see it, but it just changes the color for us. So what we were going to suggest in our conclusions recommend is that, you know, all intersections and movements operate at acceptable level of service. Any degradation in capacity between the build and no build is negligible. We do suggest adding stop signs and stop bars as noted on Matt's plans. And I will say that this will be going to OSTA. It went in once already where we got approval of the volumes that we used because we we went to them and got them. And this this will go to them. They will review the traffic study. And if they agree with it, they they they'll, it'll be fine. And if not, they will have us make some changes, probably maybe timings to the traffic signals. But since everything operates at acceptable level of service, I don't anticipate any changes from them. And I will give it back to Matt. You would like to?
I got, I am up and running now. I, I apologize for that.
I'm making you the host, so you are all set.
All right. Let's try this for a second time. Okay, so taking a quick step back discussing phase two, and that's kind of where we got a little derailed there. So phase two overall site plan is to, obviously, you want to add this drive here off of the proposed phase one drive and then include the additional parking spaces for the additional van spaces to bring Amazon to its operational level that I've desired. Also, worthy of note, there is, this project does have some, you know, floodplain impacts or fills. So we have compensatory, you know, compensatory storage added here. So we do meet up, we do not have any additional fill. And we're using this area as our area identified to include additional storage. Which is a requirement. So it's about fifteen thousand square feet of compensatory storage area required for this development. Based on the phase two addition. When we look at, I'm going to scroll through, we get to our grading plan. And one area to note is the truck loading. So this is the truck loading area with the turnaround and these are the the bay doors here. And I'd like to point out that the existing road elevation is at one eighty-four. And our dock bays are down at about one sixty-five, one sixty, a little lower than that, like one sixty-four. So six-four and a half or so. So with that being said, there's about nineteen-foot difference from the road from these, where the trucks will be unloaded. From a noise standpoint, you have a significant amount of earth between you and Lathrop Road. So I know obviously noise is always a concern, but I'd like to point out you have almost twenty feet of earthen embankment and roadway here that would probably, that will negate some of that sound. Continuing to move through drainage, as we discussed a little bit earlier. And so discussing phase two of the drainage. We do have an underground stormwater retention facility utilized from a collection system. So we have catch basins with HDP pipes, deep sumps again, collected into the underground detention facility, which we're using, proposing a storm trap system. And then that will eventually discharge into a level spreader. Before it discharges into the wetlands. This proposal is is exactly what we had proposed to the wetland commission back in November. Now on to utilities, like we just, like I was trying to show you previously. There is an existing easement for sanitary, which travels in this direction here. And we are proposing a revised easement. Which will travel in this direction so that it's not under our building. There is telephone, electric, gas, water and sewer service for this facility. Erosion control plans. We designed, we have an erosion control plan in place that meets the Connecticut DEP regulations. We're utilizing sediment traps, construction entrances, and they're all sized appropriately. We did receive some comments on our original submission from CHA, which asked for additional details, which we did provide. So we do provide the appropriate storage volumes for sediment traps, sill fence, erosion control blankets. Stockpile areas are identified. You see, we have, you know, a giant temporary sediment basin, more of these. So it meets all the standards for DEP and we will be required to get general permits and erosion control permitting for this. So moving on to landscaping. The landscaping proposed, again, both phase one and phase two meet the requirements for the for the town. I won't dive too detailed into that unless anyone has any questions. We can double back to that. I did discuss lighting. Briefly, we do not have any spillover. And I guess so, that's that's the general, and I'd like to show you some of the architectural renderings of what the building looks like. This is that south elevation, which I was discussing. This is what, this this level is actually twenty feet lower than the road. So the road is, you know, somewhere up here and we are much, much lower. So I can just flip through this. It's a pretty standard building with, it does have the overhang. But you can see actually on this page here, this is where the vans will load up under here. So there's a canopy. Canopy there. And then, yeah, so that's, that's the general gist of what the elevations look like. And I think that that should generally cover it. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I know I'm rushed. This is a very large project. I'm trying to keep it brief and answer any questions you have.
Now, I know our engineer Chuck Eaton is on the call. I don't recall seeing comments on this plan. Did you have opportunity to review?
This is Chuck Eaton, the town engineer. No, we haven't had a chance to review the revised plans. We, they were submitted to the town last week and we have not had a chance to completely go through them.
Okay.
I I would like to add, if I do, if I could, one thing about this, Chuck, while I had you on the call, it's great that we can discuss this maybe. Intersection site distance was one of those original items that was identified in our previous submission. And so what we did is we went in and I'm going to pull up the demolition plans. We are proposing, in order to meet those site, that site distance, there is some additional clearing needed in this area. So we are proposing that additional clearing, hand clearing, leaving stumps in place. Discussed it with Ryan Bray and discussed, so that additional clearing will be, will provide the additional site distance needed in this direction. And along Lathrop Road, we are going to add some signage, which will alert users and drivers of this facility that there is oncoming truck traffic in both directions. We're going to add those signs. So there would be some early warning, which we feel would definitely prevent any future accidents. Eight is preventing any accident there.
Any comments or questions, points of clarification from board members to the applicant?
I've got a couple of questions. The sewer easement, what's that service?
Sure, let me pull that up. One second. So the sewer easement, I believe, comes from across Lathrop Road. So I think that it's it's carrying the sanitary line from across the street.
So will it be disruption to service to people?
No, no disruption to service. We will, we will, there's a manhole in this current location. And all we will do is install the new sewer line and then tap the serve, then they basically will do the work in here as, keep it live. And then they'll plug this side. So install all of this work and then kick it over and then, you know, plug cap and remove this sanitary line. Probably remove it because we're excavating down.
The eighteen-wheelers coming at night, what type of noise you think that's going to generate? I don't, I understand you've got a twenty-foot-high earthen embankment there to eliminate some of the noises. But you're going to have backup beepers and all that. Is that going to cause disruption to the neighbors across the street?
Matt, did you want to talk about what we're doing there?
Right. So outside of right now, there's no, we don't, we're actually in the process of getting a sound study completed for this site. That's been ordered. So we're hoping to have some more information on that. Yes, the, absolutely, there are truck beeping backing up, right? I don't, I'm not denying that. But we do have, you know, the earthen embankment is typically going to be your best bet for sound reduction generally anyway. I would say that's one of the best measures for sound reduction in any, you know. But we will get that report and we'll review it and I'm sure we can share some of that information with you once we have it.
Will there be a vegetative buffer on top of that earthen embankment? To help mitigate anything traveling?
Yeah, let me, let me pull up the landscape plan so we can look exactly at that location.
Do the small trucks have beepers also?
The vans?
Yes.
That's a great question. You know, I know that they do have, we obviously take our safety precautions very seriously. But we we have ways to mitigate from, you know, if there are sound issues. So this is an outside load, so I don't think that's a problem. At some sites where, you know, we, Matt, that's correct, we're loading outside here? Are we loading inside?
That is correct. Yes.
At some sites where we load inside, there's a protocol that vans have to honk before they go in in order, for safety. We have workarounds that that will avoid that. But I don't believe the vans are doing a whole lot of backing up on these sites to begin with. They're usually in forward motion.
Okay.
And.
I will point out, I'm sorry.
I just have to go, my two-year-old needs to say goodnight to me, so I'm going to let Matt and I will be right back. Apologies, but he's not happy if Mama doesn't say goodnight.
Sure thing. Sure thing, so. This line I'm drawing here is the exist, it's the proposed tree line, the existing tree line is back here. So this new tree line, it's going to be reduced slightly, but there is a, there's actually a tree line there, so it's not just clear to the street, there's an existing tree line that we're going to maintain. Hopefully that does, so we're not proposing any additional work out here, except for to clear back as far as we need to make the grades work. Along seed mix and then leave the tree vegetation in place.
So for the proposed tree line that's existing? Or is that new that you're putting in?
Yeah, no, this is, this right here is the existing tree line, we're not proposing planting there, but this right here where I'm piloting in yellow is currently where the tree line is today.
Okay.
So as it is right now, there is vegetation grown, full trees, you know, vegetative tree lines out there, and so we're doing some clearing, but that clearing does not include removing all of the trees. It's only selective in order to build what we need to build.
Any other comments or questions from staff or board members?
I do have a question, Mary Ann Chinati, town planner. Um, the town is currently working with our engineer on extending the sidewalks on Lathrop Road from where they currently terminate at the eastern bank on the opposite side of the highway from this property. To extend down, I'm wondering if the applicant would be willing to partner with the town and install sidewalks from its northernmost access drive where your employees would go in and extend a sidewalk from that point to the property boundary with the big Y parcel.
So you're talking about this section right here?
Yeah.
Yep, Mary Ann, this is Tom Cody. I, I think we, we will, we will look at that and I, I think that that's a reasonable request. For that area of sidewalk addition, and so I think we can confirm it with our client, but I think it's a, it's a, it's a great idea to partner with the town on that.
Thank you.
And Ryan Bray. I have not had the opportunity to go over these plans in depth, it looks to be extremely similar to the plans that were reviewed a few months back. With the exception of the phasing. Some slight modifications to the layout of the parking. But I will, I'll be reviewing that over the next few weeks.
Okay, so just one more question, so am I seeing three active driveways onto Lathrop Road?
Four.
Four?
Four.
Okay, are they both two-way directional traffic or some of these one-way?
So this is two-way directional here, this is the truck entrance as well as exit. This is one way out only, this is for the vans leaving after they're loaded. This is two-way. And this is two-way here, so there's three two-ways and one out exit only.
Okay. All right, so given that we need staff comments as well as engineering comments. I would recommend that we continue this site plan review to our next meeting. So I would entertain a motion from members on that.
I'll make a motion to continue to the next meeting.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Sean and a second by Jared, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, site plan review is continued to our next regularly scheduled meeting in March.
Matt, can I just ask the host back please?
Thank you very much, we'll see you next week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan, yes, thank you everybody, thank you.
All right, moving on to item B, Z two thousand twenty-one nine three-two, continuation of D V J Bonsal. Requesting site plan review for addition to building to accommodate convenience store sales. In addition to pizza restaurant on property located at sixty-six War Regan Road, War Regan. Map one W, block one thirty-three C, lot sixty-seven RA nineteen zoning district. Ryan, did I have a note that there's still some outstanding issues?
Yes, there are, I've been dealing with the surveyor for the site and I just received revised plans today, there's, are still some outstanding issues. Our town engineer also has to take a look at it, so.
Okay, so given that there's still information to be reviewed before we can make a determination. I would ask board members to consider continuing this to our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Can I have, can I say something? I need to know what, what more I need to be done in that. I know that it's very late, I just submitted the drawings today. Because my surveyor is very old and that's why that is not supporting him, that's why we get so much delay.
Sure, so it's my understanding that our staff needs to review, so once they have that review, they would communicate with you, am I correct on that, Ryan?
I did perform a review and gave my comments to the surveyor. I can, if you want to give me a call tomorrow.
Okay.
We'll, we'll talk about what needs to be done.
Okay.
All right. So the floor is open for a motion.
I'll make a motion to continue this application next month.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Sean and a second by Jared to continue, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Application is continued. Item C, Z two thousand twenty-one one nine six-three, continuation of northeast real estate requesting site plan approval for contractor buildings, eleven thousand eight hundred square feet and twenty-four hundred square feet. At one thirty-five, one forty-one Ward Ave Musup, assessors map two M, block ninety-four C, lot eleven. And do we have staff or representative of the applicant? Is the applicant in attendance?
I don't think we have anyone in attendance, we are not prepared to act on this tonight. It'll be reviewed by in the wetlands this month, so next week, and you cannot act on it until they have done so.
Okay, so hearing that, I'll entertain a motion to continue.
Make a motion to continue to next month.
I'll second it.
Motion by Sean and a second by Kathy, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Application is continued to March. Item D, Z two thousand twenty-one nineteen sixty-four, continuation of northeast real estate requesting site plan approval of a three thousand three hundred sixty square foot addition to truck repair facility located at one oh eight, one fourteen, Commercial Drive Plainfield, assessors map five, block four, lot forty-one C.
We are waiting on revised plans so we can continue.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to continue.
I'll make a motion to continue to next month.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Sean and a second by Jared, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Application is continued to March. Item E, Z two thousand twenty-one one nine six-five, continuation of affordable lock and stock requesting site plan approval to construct storage units at ninety-seven Ward Ave Musup, assessors map two M, block ninety-four C, lot six.
And we received comments from CHA. There are still some outstanding issues, I don't know Chuck if you want to address those? Or if Carly just want to continue?
Have you written your comments up for us Chuck for review or not yet?
Yes ma'am, those were dated
Yesterday, I believe.
Yesterday, February eighth. And I did, I did speak with the design engineer today about those comments. So I would tend to think that the site plan is going to have some fairly significant changes as far as drainage goes. So we'll be working with the applicant on that.
Okay, so we're expecting revisions based on your feedback.
That's correct, and if you would like, I can go through the comments, but it's up, it's up to you.
I think since you'll be addressing with the applicant, I don't think it's necessary to go through them all, but I'll ask my board members if they concur with that.
I think we're saved them in an email, didn't we, Ryan?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, you did.
Okay, so hearing no other item on this, I'll entertain a motion to continue.
I'll make a motion to continue to next month.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Sean and a second by Kathy, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Application is continued to March. Item F, Z two thousand twenty-one one nine six-seven of Sanger Mono Properties LLC. Requesting plan development district site plan review for retail and wholesale business, building materials, storage and sale. Manufacturer of construction and building materials from earth, rock, ore, minerals and recycled materials. Truck terminal, earth excavation, processing and removal at twelve twenty-one and twelve forty-one Norwich Road Plainfield. Assessors map five, block four, lots forty-two and forty-two A. Items for discussion among board members. So Ryan had indicated all of his comments were addressed. The engineer did not have any comments on this application. We had talked about the suggested hours change nine to two on Saturday for the crusher. And I believe Ryan had a note about engineer fees and one other note, I can't put my hands on.
Yes, we do not have the engineering fees as of yet, but I oppose to make sure those are taken care of prior to filing my Lars. My Lars to be filed in town clerk's office. The applicant has proposed hour change for the crusher on Saturdays from nine o'clock to two o'clock. And also the crusher will have a mister installed for dust control.
All right, any other items for board member discussion?
The only concern I really had, I don't think it applies anymore, I was concerned about contamination from materials, but as this is all supposed to be clean material from the net, it shouldn't be a problem.
Okay. If I could just add, the applicant's engineer did indicate that he would be submitting best management practices.
That was for the dust control for the other operation, correct?
Yeah. That is correct.
Okay. So hearing no other items for discussion, I'll entertain a motion on the application.
I'll make a motion to approve it with with the changes of hours operation.
I second.
Okay, I have a motion to approve with the condition by Sean and a second by Lindsay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, application is approved with that change to hours.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to new business. And actually Chuck, did you have any other items on the agenda that you're going to be giving input for, or shall we release you from this meeting?
No, I believe I am all set.
All right, very good, thanks for joining us and have a good evening.
Thank you, you too, take care.
Thank you. New business, item A, Z two thousand twenty-one nineteen seventy-nine of Carl Kemp. Requesting a site plan approval for storage buildings on property located at one forty-four, one forty-six Norwich Road, Central Village. Map fifteen, block seventy-two, lot four A, commercial zoning district. Do we have the applicant on the call?
Uh, yes, you do.
All right. And do we have the site plan to pull up, Ryan?
We do, I don't know if you want to at this point though, Wetlands will be receiving it next week for the first, or yes, next week for the first time, they won't be able to act until March, so.
Okay, so we're not ready to proceed on this one then?
No, April at the earliest for planning zoning.
Okay, so hearing that, I'll entertain a motion to continue to our next meeting.
I'll make a motion to continue to the next meeting.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Sean and a second by Jared, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, application is continued to our next meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. All right, item B was Z two thousand twenty-one one nine eight four, and this was a text amendment that requires a public hearing. So I'll entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing.
I'll make a motion to schedule that for public hearing next month, at the next month's meeting.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Sean and a second by Kathy, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, scheduled to public hearing. Review and act on the minutes from the January twelfth regular meeting. Did anyone have any modifications or changes to the minutes?
No, I was okay with the minutes, I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a second by Jared, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, minutes are approved. There was correspondence included in our packet. Was there any other additional correspondence for the record?
Not that I am aware of.
Okay, and I don't believe we had anything under other, so we'll go to report from zoning enforcement.
Okay, I will send this out to shortly after the meeting. S and P Ventures, which are at six eighty-one Norwich Road, intersection of Norwich Road and Fifth Street. So that had been under violation, I sent the violation notice out December third for non-compliance with the approved site plan. And so far it appears that they are in compliance. Trucks been parked behind, behind the building every time I go by. And they removed the sign that was on the building, so they appear to be adhering to the terms of the site plan at this point, so I'm removing that from the report. Thirty-five Star Rock Road, Jackson Residence, I have to contact her to find out what her status is. Haven't heard from her in a while, but she was down to ninety-one chickens and she has to be down to about eighty-seven. So fourteen Canterbury Road, Mitchell Bole, junk vehicles on property, I'm preparing to send out the notice of violation for that. Thirty-two forty-four Norwich Roads, we LLC, we are still attempting to work with the property owner and the applicant to come into compliance that we do not have to proceed to court. Thirty-nine Lilyburg Road, Moran Residence, registered motor vehicles and parts. I haven't been out there lately because of an injury. I'll have to get out there to see what, what they've been doing since my, my last inspection in October. Two eleven Kate Downing Road, Mackin Residence, I have to make one more inspection on that for pictures before I send it off to the attorney. I am now able to drive the town vehicles, so I'll be doing that shortly. Thirteen Simmons Ave, Doug Drisco Motor Vehicle Junkyard, I have not seen him since early November. The neighbor did state that apparently his information to me might not be accurate in that he's been removing vehicles regularly. So I'll be sending out a letter for update and hopefully be getting out there at some point in the near future for an inspection, but I'm not completely mobile yet, so we'll see how that goes. Two South Pine Street, Rosemary Belling. Commercial trucks and fuel cell. The zoning board of appeals heard her, heard her appeal at their January meeting. They upheld my decision, the violation stands. And they, the trucks have not been removed from the property, however, the house is on the market and they are looking to, to move. So hopefully that will take place before too long. Lot fourteen A, High Street, Charles Corson, this is the garage that he was converting to a dwelling without permits. He was granted a variance for the rear yard setback to bring that property into compliance. Permits have not yet been issued for a house. However, once those are issued, I'll be able to remove that from this report. Zero Norwich Road and Rude Road, the Rude Fields. Notice of violation for earth excavation was sent out December sixteenth and that was received by, by the property owner. I have not been down that way lately to see if there's been any change. I have not been down that way lately to see if there's been any change. Two hundred Stark Weather Road. This was a, a two-story shed or garage that appeared to be converted to living space on the second floor. This became a joint task effort with the Northeast Department of Health and also the Building Department. N D D H was able to make entry on January twenty-seventh. And they supplied us with a number of photos. The second floor is mostly finished. It has electrical and plumbing. The shower's been installed. There is plumbing for a sink and a toilet. The, the building has been sheet rocked for the most part. So it's obviously going to be a dwelling. That was the intent anyway, which is not in accordance with the regulations. So the building department is going to be taking the lead on this one because work was performed without permits. So they'll be stopping work over there. They will not allow work to proceed without a zoning permit, which can't be issued. So.
Okay.
Orwin Zerav, David Cannon and Giorgiana Gagliardo Ducks in the RA thirty zone. Letter was sent out November fifth to rehome in the sixty days. She did do so. She was looking to potentially bring them back, but apparently has dropped that. So I can remove that from the report as well. And that is it.
Okay. Any questions from board members on the violations list?
Is there somebody else that they can go inspect some of these things if you're not capable of getting to them?
Well, I am the only zoning officer, so not really.
There's nobody that can go look at this stuff and give you a report back to what they say? That's not possible.
We can discuss that in the office. As of this moment, no, but we can discuss that.
I mean, you got several of these that are still on there from November, actually longer than that.
Correct.
I'd like to get rid of them.
I, I would as well.
And you indicated you are mobile now, right, Ryan? So the
Partially.
Okay. So you expect that over the course of the next three to four weeks, you'll be able to do more than you've been able to in recent weeks?
Yeah, snow's going to be an issue. I can't really walk through the snow at all. So I, I have partial use of my knee, my knee now, but not full.
Okay. Okay. Anything else for zoning enforcement?
Nothing.
All right, report from planning and zoning.
In addition to my written report, just a couple of additions. The First Selectman has arranged with Tom Hennick to put on a Freedom of Information workshop on Thursday, February twenty-fifth at six o'clock. I believe the First Selectman emailed everyone that it is coming up, so that it will be a Zoom workshop. And you'll be able to access that from the town's calendar. Also, I emailed members earlier today, previously sent around was the brochure for the Connecticut Land Use Law for Municipal Land Use Agencies Board and Commissions brochure. The Connecticut Bar Association workshop that's put, put on every two years. It is going to be via Zoom this year. It is March sixth, which is a Saturday. It's an all-day workshop from nine o'clock to about four, four-thirty. And they're looking for registrations as soon as possible so that they can get the materials sent out to attendees. So far, I've got myself, the zoning enforcement officer and member Martell wanting to sign up for this. So if anyone that is interested in, in attending would please let me know sooner rather than later, I can get you registered.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so I will entertain motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
So I have a motion by Sean and a second by Jared. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Good night.